You can go ahead and call the February council meeting order, roll call.
Krupcak?
Here.
Schmansky?
Here.
Wayack?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Kuhn?
Here.
First is approval of January minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the January council minutes, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Treasury's report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the Treasury's report, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is citizens forum.
I would like to speak again, but I don't know if you want me to wait till...
We'll wait till we get to that committee. And, you're in, okay?
Thank you.
Well, committee reports then, first is Ways and Means.
Ways and Means had one meeting to report. There is a correction on the bottom of the minutes. The number five and six should be six and seven. There's two fives on there right now, so... The old five is now the new six, and the old six is now the new seven. With that change, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes as corrected, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nkusa County Council, a Ways and Means meeting was held on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the Nkusa Council chambers. Members present were Garrett Kuhn, chairperson, Terry Schmansky, secretary, Robert Schultz, Larry Krupcak. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Wenzel, August Wayack, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Ambulance Chief Don Harnish, Police Chief Shawn Woods, and Tom Lukes or Lokes from the RCCA media coordinator. Number one, recommend having River Cities Community access for taping council meetings for $1,000. Number two, audit the bills. Number three, approve license to serve fermented malt beverages for Michelle Kanowski, Michaela Russell, Xavier Tisham, William Davis. Number four, discuss Infotech billing and computer issues and recommend doing a study for IT. Recommend paying Infotech bill of $21,034.50. Number five, send Dan Schmidt to Mardi Gras Expo, February 17th, 2015, for $100. Send Bobby Hertzberg to TIPS user group training, March 11th, 2015, in Madison. Send out to three council members to annual meeting at the ridges in Wisconsin Rapids. Number six, recommend shake service agreement. And number seven, so discuss library report. Any questions?
Garrett, on the number, what is it?
Three.
Three. Could you hold out William Davis for a separate vote?
For a second vote? Sure. Item three of the Ways and Means minutes, we are going to set out William Davis for a separate vote. So, number three will read, approve license to serve fermented malt beverages for Michelle Kanowski, Michaela Russell, and Xavier Tisham. Recommend for adoption, items one, two, uh, no, one, three, four, five, and six.
Second.
Motion in second and afford to approve items one, three, four, five, and six of the Ways and Means, roll call. Krupcak?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Okay, now we have to approve license to serve fermented malt beverages for William Davis.
You second.
Second.
Motion second to approve item three for William Davis, roll call. Krupcak?
Epstein.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Epstein.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I have moved that minute to second.
Second. Motion in second to approve Public Works minutes, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nkusa County Council, Public Works meeting was held on Wednesday, February 4th, 2015, at 9:00 AM in the Nkusa Council chambers. Members present were Larry Krupcak, Terry Schmansky, Robert Schultz, Garrett Kuhn. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, August Wayack, Bill Caverly Sr. from the DPW, and Derry Fancher. Item one, discuss alleyways. Item two, discuss West Six Street stormwater project. Item three, discuss water issues. Item four, discuss wastewater treatment plan updates. Item five, discuss the MSA updates. Item six, recommend sending two men to Wisconsin River Water Quality Improvement School, March 19th, 2015, with registration cost of $30 each. Employee expenses as per employee handbook. Item seven, recommend sending one man to Wisconsin DOT North Central Region Annual Utility Conference, February 19th, 2015, with registration cost of $20. Employee expense as per employee handbook. Item eight, recommend sending two men to the 27th Annual WRWA Technical Conference, March 24th through the 27th, 2015, with registration cost of $235 each. Employee expense as per employee handbook.
There's a question. Who is WRWA?
That's your Wisconsin Rural Water Association.
Did I know what it's called?
If there's no other questions, we move to adopt items six, seven, and eight.
Second.
Hang on a second. Amy, what was your?
Well, I just wanted to... I know you guys are probably sick of hearing me talk about this, and I appreciate you listening, but, um... The last council meeting, I brought that letter. I asked you guys to make the alleyway between Prospect and Miles Avenue a no-stopping or parking zone. Obviously, it affects us. If somebody puts in a window there and is allowed to have vehicles stopping, it affects us getting in and out of our driveway. It's also a safety hazard with the garages the way they are. It's hard to see. You'll have increased traffic. I brought up different city ordinances that I thought applied. Um, since the last meeting, I decided to go through and look up the Wisconsin State statutes and see what I could find about this. In section 346.53, it reads, "Parking prohibited in certain specific places. No person shall stop or leave any vehicle standing in any of the following places except temporarily for the purpose of and while actually engaged in loading or unloading or in receiving or discharging passengers and while the vehicle is attended by a licensed operator so it may be promptly removed in case of emergency or to avoid obstruction of traffic." Number two was in an alley in a business district. Number four is within four feet of the entrance to an alley or private road or a driveway. So, if you have cars at a pickup window in the alley, to me, there's no way that line can be moved promptly for us to get out if there's even more than one vehicle there. Um, just having a car, there is an obstruction of the alley, which according to the state statute shouldn't happen. And then, any car stopped in the alley at the pickup window would be within four feet of the entrance to our driveway. So, that's prohibited by state law. So, if Subway is allowed to use the alley for their business, it violates that no stopping within four feet of the driveway.
Does that fall under the section of loading and unloading? No, they have to leave their vehicle. You know, somebody's in their vehicle...
It just says someone has to be in the vehicle, even in the vehicle. So, attempted to find...
And so they can stay in their vehicle, they're okay.
But they have to be able to... They have to be loading or unloading or receiving or discharging passengers. Is how it was ordered. So, I don't know. If they're stopped there, it's between a $50 to $200 fine. So, if Subway puts a window in and I'm blocked into my driveway, does that mean I can write down license plates and call it in? And these people get fined for being there? I mean, I don't... To me, that makes me seem really mean-spirited and nasty, and I don't like to be that way. But I'm trying to protect myself and my family. I mean, we need to be able to get in and out of our driveway. To me, it seems mean of Subway to be doing this when they know it affects us this way anyway. And it doesn't seem legal to me for the alley to be used for... Cars are being stopped there. According to Wisconsin state law, they're not allowed to be doing that. So, that's all I wanted to bring up tonight. Again, ask you guys, if it was your driveway and affected you coming in and out, how would you vote at that point? 346.53.
Well, we discussed this quite heavily at the meeting on that morning. And I guess my stance on it, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the guys, my stance on it is, um... We can't stop her from putting a window in. You understand?
Yeah, we understand that.
Absolutely. Okay, and as far as putting restrictions on an alleyway, I personally am dead-set against it because it's... We've got other alleyways in town. And eventually, this could fall over into another one where somebody else may not like something that's going there. I guess my stance on it is, is if she chooses to put the window in, and then we have to attack it because it becomes a problem, then you go after them. But if it turns out to be nothing of a problem, or if she just changes her mind and says, "The heck with it, I'm not going to spend the money." Because it is substantial amount of money she has to put into that to get that rolling. And that's still, actually, when I talked to her, and I spent time talking to her too on this. And, um... I was given the impression that this is the ways off yet, even for her to make a decision as to whether she's going to do it or not.
Originally, she was hoping to have it in by February, which would be this month.
Right, well, these are hoes. But she's putting out feelers, for lack of a better word, now, to her customers. Would you even use this? You know, is this something that you would like to see happen to our store? You know, would it be made, you know... Am I going to be putting this in and just going to be sitting there taking up room? Or is it, uh... Going to be a boon for the business or whatever? I hate to put the council in the middle of it, or anybody here, to, uh... Take one side or the other.
Well, I guess if it was an alley that didn't affect the driveway, it would be different. But it affects the driveway. It affects people getting in and out of their personal residence.
Well, there's driveway...
So, it's not...
All the alleyways affect driveways, whether it's business or residential.
Right. But all the alleyways aren't asking to put up a fast food pickup window.
That's true. But, I mean, it's still the same thing. I mean, it's, uh... I'm not in favor of putting in restriction. My... I might, myself personally. You know? And I guess what I did is I looked at the guys there. I said, "We just leave it on its course. If she puts the window in and it gets to be that much of a headache, then we'll have to see what we can work with them." And if she may decide not to do it at all, you don't know. I mean, she's still up in the air about that, so... You know, I know, uh... I think it... It's always... That's the way... That's what I'm making for the recommendation anyhow. And that's why we just have a discussed item there with all the recommendations, because that's exactly what we did. And we did talk quite a long time ago, so... You know, that's my opinion on it anyhow. I'm not going to speak for anybody else. I know there's guys here that think it would be a conundrum to have it there, just like you do. And I just, I'm not in favor of stepping in between, you know? Just, if she decides to put it in and it doesn't work, well, we won't have to tackle that issue then. But to deny her doing it, or to, actually, not deny her doing it, but to change roadway rules just to suit one person versus the other, I don't agree with that either. You know, she's got the right, you've got rights. You know?
Can I ask who has more of a right? Say, I'm in the alleyway and she needs to business. Who actually has?
That's where you got a...
You know, there's a fine line there, you know?
Yeah. Nobody has more rights.
Right. I mean, theoretically, you should be stopping in the alleyway anyways.
You know, how would you regulate? How would you ask us to regulate? Who would have more rights? Do it the way you can. You know? It's just, you use the alleyway, she uses the alleyway. Matter of fact, I think you're the only two on there that really do use it, you know, on a regular basis.
Right. I mean, the gas station uses it for servicing, like air conditioning and stuff like that. But, you know, usually, you got one way or another you can get in.
Right.
You know, if you do get a line of vehicles, you know, it could be a hassle getting in either way. Kind of what I'm worried about, you know? I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, like you said, but...
Exactly. You know, we always got the crystal ball. And that's the reason that we sort of went that way, is let's see what happens first. Because we can't stop her from putting a window in. But if something happens later, then we'll attack.
We offer no assurances to them, and it seems questionable to most of us. I think, why you want to put the window in in the first place?
Right.
Given that fact.
And just so you know, that was explained to her when I talked to her, that there were... You know, if you put the window in, I can't say that this won't be revisited at a later time. If there's enough complaints, we have to look into it. So, just so you're aware, what'll happen. I made her no assurances whatsoever. Just like I can't make you any insurance.
Right.
So... And that's why I made the recommendation the way I did, so... Or actually, didn't make the recommendation. So, I hope you can understand our point of view on it. And believe me, I understand you too. You know, it's a rock and a hard place we're in right now.
Yeah, we're not trying to be bad neighbors, but we are trying to protect our interests.
Exactly. You know, and that's not a problem.
Turn it up before it becomes an issue.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, can we have a motion in second? We do? Yes. Roll call. Wayack?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yeah.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Krupcak?
Yes.
Next is Public Safety.
Public Safety has one meeting. You need to accept minutes as written.
Second.
Motion in second to accept the approved minutes as written, all on paper? Are you opposed?
The Honorable Mayor and members of the Cleveland County Council, Public Safety meeting was held Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, at 5:30 PM in the Nkusa Council chambers. Members present were Terry Schmansky, Jared Brison, Robert Wenzel, secretary, Emmett Peterson, Garrett Kuhn. Also in attendance were August Wayack, Robert Schultz, Andrew Berg, Shawn Woods, Mayor Al Marco, Ambulance Chief Don Harnish, Mike Archie, and Craig Van Aston. Number one, discuss EMT Retirement Party at 6:00 PM on 2/9/2015. Number two, recommend hiring Jane Shaw as the new firefighter. Number three, recommend sending two firefighters to tie program instructor training in Toma, February 24th, 25th, 2015, to pay only mileage while they're paid for it. Number four, recommend sending one police officer to evidence tech school in Green Bay from 4/20 to 4/24/2015. Number five, discuss enhanced pedestrian safety on Marja Street and Point Bass Avenue. Number six, discuss four-way stop on Wood Avenue. We'll continue the study of traffic behavior. Number seven, recommend two-hour parking on Cresview Lane from Sedge Street to Maple Street, both sides. Number eight, recommend change of status for police officer Jason Wilson from full-time to part-time. Number nine, recommend additional offer of full-time employment to Andrew Berg as police officer pending passing remaining evaluations.
Terry, number five should be... Or, uh, marketed in section?
No.
No.
No. There was one not by the milk.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. But shouldn't seven be during school hours?
Oh, from seven to... Isn't it seven?
Seven-four.
Seven-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Was that the question?
Seven-four?
On school...
School days only.
On school days. Yep.
Okay? Is your motion in second?
I'm second.
Okay.
Roll call. Okay, this is for, uh... Did I miss something? What, two through, uh... Two through four?
Two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, four.
Seven. Yep. Very good. Okay. Kuhn?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Krupcak?
Yes.
Okay, next is property recreation and human affairs.
Property recreation and human affairs had one meeting. Make motion to set meeting minutes as printed.
Second. Motion in second to approve the minutes as printed, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed?
Honorable Mayor and members of the Nkusa County Council, the property recreation and human affairs meeting was held on Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the Nkusa Council chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, chairperson, Garrett Kuhn, secretary, August Wayack, Emmett Peterson. Also in attendance were Bill Caverly Sr., DPW, Dan Schmidt, Terry Whitmore. Skate park committee consisting of Jack Rogers, Anna Kalerman, Jeremy Anthony, Chris Hiles, Beth Thomas, Kaylee Jensen. Number one, recommend rolling thunder rotters 2015 cruising dates for Thursdays at 6:00 to 9:00 PM from May 28th, 2015, to September 3rd, 2015. Number two, discuss skate park updates. Plans proceeding for Phase One of development. Number three, discuss signage for recreational park. State park committee is running a design contest for final draft of the design. Number four, discuss community center updates. Number five, recommend hiring Tanner Lieber, Tim Roszewski, Wyatt Caverly, and Travis Webb for 2015 summer help. Number six, committee went into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 Part I, Part E, regarding industrial park. Committee number seven, committee went into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 Part II. And number eight, discuss pump confess location. Make a recommendation, approve number one and five.
Second. There's a motion in second to approve items one and five of the property recreation and human affairs report, roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Krupcak?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Next is wage and salary. Brad's not here.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Wage and salary had held one meeting on February 4th, 2015, at 3:30 in the council chambers. I moved that minute to second.
Motion in second to approve the wage and salary minutes, all on paper?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nkusa County Council, wage and salary meeting was held on Wednesday, February 4th, 2015, 3:30 PM in the Nkusa Council chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Robert Schultz, and August Wayack. Also in attendance were Bill Caverly Sr. from the DPW, John Troutman, CPA, Shank and Associates, Joseph Emmerich, second, City Clerk. Moved by Wayack, seconded by Schultz, to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, 19.851C regarding public works directors' benefits. All members voted yes. Motion by Schultz, seconded by Wayack to go into open session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, 19.852, to make recommendations regarding matters in closed session. All members voted yes. Item one, recommend adjusting insurance payout for 2015...
2014, 2015.
2014, 2015.
I'm sorry about that.
Copy. To reflect taxable income to DPW director.
Okay, second. Motion in second to approve item one of the wage and salary meeting, roll call. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Krupcak?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for committee reports. All business. First is the resolution for a budget transfer. We did part of this last year to transfer $500,000 from the general fund back into the water account. This is the second half of basically catching up what we need to do for the past few years. So, request a motion in second to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Is it still... It's the water end of the general.
Right.
I think you said general.
Well, what I've got is from the general.
To water.
To water.
Yeah. I don't have a... It should be water to general.
Okay. Yeah, it's water to general. Okay. That's a to from.
To two.
Oh, yeah, to from. Both from.
Both to from.
Yeah, it's water.
But the water department will be happy to take...
It's a simple...
You did a transfer.
Just took a simple...
It's a transfer from the water account to the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that good for the system? We've got to operate.
Is there a second on it?
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Kuhn?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Krupcak?
Yes.
Next is another budget transfer resolution. This came out of the wage and salary committee. I wasn't at the meeting. I talked to Brad tonight about it. And when I originally discussed this issue with John, we had talked about... This was transferring money out of an account that was set aside for the health insurance. And this is going into a wage and salary account for the DPW department.
Yes.
We took a pretty good hit this year with the insurance. With the budget. We didn't pad it or leave enough in there for if we had an issue coming up next year. My thought was to leave this in the health insurance account so we don't have to, um... Look forward to get at the fall or when we have the next budget round. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. I know...
Well, this was... Well, I had to back in the budget. And that was one reason that I did my health insurance the way it was. And we talked about this at budget time. Do you have money for, you know, a raise in the budget? And we'll discuss them. Yes, we do, because I chose not to take the health insurance. And so, over $16,000 is $33,000 is because I did not take the health insurance. And that's why we were going to take it. And this is the public works health insurance. It's not just everybody. It's the public works. And we were going to put it in an outlay account. And then the council would have the right to move it from that outlay account at any time, anyway. So, in other words, you put it in the outlay account. Let's say next year, you're short. You can do another resolution, pull it out of there.
So, this wage and salary account that we're transferring to is going to be, is an outlay account?
Yes, it is. It's a wage and salary outlay account set up in the public works department.
Okay.
So, it's parked in the outlay account. So, you could do a resolution at any time to pull it out of there.
You see, that's the remaining amount of actual expenses versus budget expenses. That was a bit of a, you know, surplus. So, rather than going into the general fund, you want to designate it so it went into a public works outlay. Wage and salary.
They can give it out.
Mick, Al, you said you got a hit on insurance?
Well, we took that... The one option that we had when it came time to, for setting the budget, it was leave the 5% in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And/or cut something else. So, we cut that 5% out.
I thought you...
No, that's what I did.
Okay. But the insurance kind of went down a little bit.
Yeah.
So, this would be an outlay account.
Okay. So, everybody's all right with it?
Yeah.
Motion is second to approve.
Make a motion.
Group up. Coon?
Yes.
Waya?
Yes.
Kupcak?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Next is monthly report. First is Police Department.
So, move. Second.
Motion is second to approve the Police Department's monthly report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Public Works.
So, move. Second.
Motion is second to approve Public Works report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Ambulance Department.
So, move. Second.
Motion is second to approve the Ambulance Department's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Fire Department.
So, move. Second.
Motion is second for the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill's inspector wasn't reviewed report, but... Yeah.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Community Center monthly report.
So, move.
Motion is second for the Community Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Airport Commission.
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Bills.
Somewhere in there, I guess.
You wait the three bill lists and Council 390, Property Rec 250, Public Safety 250, Ways and Means is 250, Wage and Salary 195, Public Works 250, Ways and Means 250, Mayor's Salary 675.
Make a motion, the Bills, okay?
Second. Motion is second. Group up.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Kupcak?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Waya?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah.
For those that weren't here, Public Safety, just about everybody was, if Flare wasn't, far as Alderman, but this is Andrew Burke. He's re-approved tonight for the new police officer position. And he just has one evaluation report to come back, which I should give notification on tomorrow. Pending good results from that, he'll be our... Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Make a little dumb?
Anything else?
Make motion, Jared. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?